We're going to call this meeting order. We welcome you here today. This is the, what's the date today? The 26th?
26th.
Yep, 26th of February. Our county commission meeting and it's good to have you all here. We're going to have an invocation today by Chris Crockett and a pledge of allegiance by Quinn Fowers. We'll go to that point.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads to pray and offer up thanks for the many blessings which we have. We are grateful to be citizens of this country, this great state and this wonderful county. Father, we ask that thy blessings be upon us this day as we have this commission meeting, that we will be able to make decisions that are in the best interests of thy children. Father, we ask that thou please present to us opportunities where we may show one another more kindness and service. We love thee so very much, dear heavenly Father, and we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Well, I'm supposed to give the thought of the day today, so I'm going to tell you. A few years ago, a good friend of mine said to me, he says, you know, March 1st will be a couple more days. He says, you don't shovel the snow after March 1st. I says, what do you mean, you don't shovel the snow? He says, just that. He says, after March 1st it melts. Now, I don't think that's the case up in the Upper Valley, is it?
I don't think so. Well, welcome, yeah. Come and shovel the snow if you'd like.
Well, anyway, in the Lower Valley, where we're at, I'm telling you, March 1st, and that's only a couple of days away. And so I put my snow shovel away last night. I cleaned the garage and I put it out in the back barn and I'm done shoveling snow for the year. So hallelujah. So you guys can, although I will say, I got married on March 21st in 1973, and on that day it snowed 43 inches in Plain City. And that was on the ground, flat, 43 inches. The power was out for seven days and you couldn't hardly get out of town. I couldn't believe the amount of snow we had. Little lake effect, I think. So maybe I'm wrong there, too. Well, I put the snow shovel away last night. Commissioner.
Did you, did you put your banana plants in, too, in your garden? You've got to be able to grow bananas out there where it's warm.
Yeah, it was that warm, huh? All right. We'll go to item E on our agenda and ask for public comments. Are there those who've come to comment to the commission today? I see somebody getting up. Looks like former mayor Molesky. So good to have you here today.
There's the mayor.
Speak up.
Toby Molesky, address is 3325 North 1000 West in Pleasantview. Commissioners, I'm here to address item, action item number one, the elective service benefit agreement. I believe this policy is a bad policy. It should have been dealt with in October. It wasn't. It's here again. I think you should deal with it once and for all and just remove it altogether. This is a public service job. It should not be a public service payout at the end. I believe, I feel, as a lot of the Weber County residents do, that it should not exist. Hope you have the courage to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. We appreciate that. So as far as announcements, since you brought that up.
Hold on, you may have another comment.
Well, okay, I am going to say, though, we're removing item one from the action items today, and we're going to delay it one more month, or one more week.
Two more.
Well, actually, it'll be two more because next week we're canceled the meeting. So we will be gone. Yes, sir?
Commissioners, Phil Swanson, North Ogden City, 857 East 3250 North. I'm also here to speak about action item number one. It's been removed from the agenda item. I have a little bit different take than Toby in that I feel for those who are unelected officials that did not have the power to create or to do away with this policy, that there's been some kind of expectation that they've garnished over time that there would be some health care coverage afterwards. Ostensibly, the purpose of this was to provide health care for those individuals for a five-year period of term before there was Obamacare and the exchanges and those kinds of things. I would ask that you come to some kind of a compromise wherein there is not a cash payout. This isn't about receiving a cash bonus, but supposedly about health care for a five-year period of term and simply keep these individuals on the county health insurance program for five years following their tenure of service without any cash pay. They can stay on for the entire five years. If they take employment somewhere else and they have better health care, they can opt out of the program at that point in time. I'd encourage you to vote no on the cash payout, but not leave those who were not in a position to make a change on the lurch as well. Thank you for your service, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kerry Wayne. I live at 309 South, 1200 West Ogden, Utah. You might remember me from last August. I was, again, wanting to talk to action item number one. One of the things I noticed up there on your wall is public trust to conduct the affairs of the county government such a way as to nurture public confidence. I received information today that said that the payouts to Commissioner Ebert has been made, and this is merely just to cover the paper trail. And I ask that you may comment on that and tell us whether or not that's true and whether or not it is. Again, I asked in August that you change the policy because of the fact it was a burden to individuals on my, my house payment went up $130 a month, and I'm okay with that, but it was mainly based on the property tax increase that the county took. But I was thinking of all my neighbors who are on fixed income and can't afford that 20% increase, and especially when it's being done to pay for these types of programs. Again, I have the policy here in front of me, the 4-300 insurance and retirement benefits. It allows for your employees to have that five years' worth of health coverage. The difference is the incentive policy is a tool for HR managers to reduce headcount. And this has been going on for 10 years, and yet we have openings listed on the Weber County Human Resource page for deputies. We're paying deputies to go away, and I cannot understand the logic behind that. Again, I think that, I believe that possibly one of the reasons why nothing was ever done was because the commissioners who were in charge from August until December reaped that benefit. And I think that it's time that you step up, you do away with it completely, all the incentive policy. Because again, those employees are covered underneath your regular HR policy. And it's a shame that we can't be upfront with the citizens of this county because they are owed it. So again, I hope you'll do the right thing, just like Terry Thompson said, and get rid of the policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very good. We'll go to the consent items now on our agenda. We appreciate all of you coming today, and we apologize for removing that off the agenda. We're just continuing to work on it. Consent items, first items on there are the approval of the warrants, number 1708 through 1777, and 436971 through 437215, in the amount of $1,254,373. Second item is approval of purchase orders, $13,112. Third item on there is approval of the minutes of the meetings held, meeting held on February the 19th of this year. Item four is request for approval to cancel the regular commission meeting scheduled for March 5th. As it turns out, we'll be out of town, the three commissioners, to our National Association of Counties meetings in Washington, DC. Request for approval of scheduled, to schedule a public hearing for March 12th from 10:00 a.m. to consider proposed ordinance ZTA 2018-08, a request to create architecture, landscaping and screening standards for the west Weber planning area, new commercial areas. And item number six is the same thing. It's a request for a public hearing. So in the past, they've scheduled these public hearings a little different way, and I requested that we have this on the agenda so that we can schedule these. That way, we know what's coming up in front of us, and it's easy to get behind on this stuff. So we're going to approve these today, but in the future, Charlie, you want to do this a different way. Could you come up and address that?
Sure, I'd love to, even though I don't like being put on the spot. Commissioners, thank you so much for thinking about this. One thing I discussed with Commissioner Jenkins, a few years ago, we did do requests to set the date in the same way that you see on your agenda right now. And a few years ago, we steered away from that because it tends to take about five weeks to get any of these items on the county commission agenda after the planning commission has made a recommendation. That's five weeks because of noticing times. It's five weeks because of the time it takes to get from a Tuesday planning commission meeting to another Tuesday county commission meeting. Whereas if we don't do a request to set the date, we can get things from the planning commission or the county commission within two to three weeks at a maximum. But again, it'd be minimum five weeks if we did request to set the dates. If the concern, as I discussed with Chair Jenkins, if the concern is that the commission is not getting items for public hearings insufficient enough time before the meeting to review and adequately be informed about it, we're more than happy to make sure the commission gets those two weeks in advance or even more so. But to go with a request to set the date like we did about five years ago when I was first hired on, it's a five-week delay for the applicant above and beyond what we're already doing, which may run contrary to the public service and customer service that we're hoping to achieve in our department.
So we still have to post a public hearing. He just wants to come up and talk to us each individually because it shorts the delay period for the people who need the public hearing. And I'm sympathetic to that. I agree. You don't want these to have to go out too far. My only concern is these things sneak up on you, and a lot of times we haven't done, we don't get the information in time.
Mr. Chairman, would it be fair if something sneaks up and it's just not ripe, not ready for a decision, to pull it from the agenda and we can renotice it?
The only thing I feel bad about there is people come out of their way to respond to these, and public hearings are pretty big deals generally.
Yeah.
So I think we've got to be just a little sharper. And I say we, it's really me. It's not so much these two. I represent myself in that fact. I like to know when these things are ahead of you, and I like to be aware of public hearings. You know, I like to build a study up on the issue and not just.
Be prepared.
Uh-huh. And not just simply read something. I want to be able to get into the issue because normally public hearings, you're approving something special or you're changing something, you know, they're pretty big deals.
Yeah.
So I like to be on top of public hearings, but.
If the time is necessary, we're happy to do whatever you guys want to do.
Sure. And I'm okay with that. Would either of you care?
Yeah. So would this new procedure, you think, give a little more opportunity to cut some of the time out between the time they make the application and actually have the public hearing? So we're giving a little better service to the public? Is that your opinion?
I think so. So what we were doing up until this meeting today is we were sending public hearings just up to you guys, maybe, we were probably sending you guys the packet maybe four days in, four or five days in advance, not giving you enough time.
Okay.
And I think what's been requested is that we get at least two weeks in advance. The procedure that's on the agenda today would be about a five-week delay, but if we just did two weeks in advance, we could still stick to that two-week timeframe. So yeah, I think that would.
Well, I think we need to, and I agree with Chair Jenkins, that the public hearings are very important, that the public has the ability to come in and weigh in for these issues. At the same time, we owe the opportunity for these people making the request to make sure those requests are heard in a timely manner, and I don't think a five-week period of time is timely. We need to give better service in that end, and if whatever we can do to give better service, timely service, and at the same time, give the opportunity for public hearings, we need to do that. So it sounds like you may be on the right track.
Hopefully. And we can make whatever adjustments we need to in the future as you see fit.
Thank you. And I think anything that improves our process and helps with the building and the process by which people can start with a raw piece of ground and end up with a home on it, if we can improve that process and make that easier, more friendly for our environment, anything we can do to help that process, I'm in favor of.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
All right, item number eight is request for approval of retirement agreements between Weber County and Camille Colvin and Diana Mason. Item nine is request for Weber Morgan Health Department for approvals of surplus office equipment and furniture. All right, those are the action, our consent items. Are there any questions, Commissioner, for that? Lynn, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. We had two purchase orders totaling a little over $13,000. 76% or $10,000 of that went to the Roads Department for auto parts. 24% or $3,000 went to IT for server maintenance. We had 255 checks totaling 1.3 million. Largest of these, 30% or $382,000 went to the paramedic fund. It was actually two months of contributions there. 12% or $151,000 tourism, the convention visitor bureau payment, and also some Golden Spike funds. 9% or $117,000 Weber Human Services as part of our monthly payment. 9% or $112,000 Weber Housing Authority for housing payments. Another about 9%, $107,000 for Public Defender Services, and finally 6% or $74,000 to Fleet Department for two trucks.
Very good. There's no questions, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we accept the consent items as read and explained.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? They're unanimously approved. Now, I got to go back to item F. I skipped our presentation. Lori Randall, come on up. You're going to talk to us a little about it, gives an update, between Weber County Sheriff Office Victims Advocate Program. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, my name is Lori Randall, and I'm currently holding the new victim advocacy position at the Weber County Sheriff's Office. It is a grant position, and as part of the grant, I'm supposed to present to you twice a year. So this is my first time doing this, so if I miss something, if I don't have quite the information that you ask for, then I apologize and I will get it, do better next time. Basically, the advocate position at the sheriff's office is to help reach out to victims of all crimes that happen within the county. And in doing so, my first quarter, I only reached out to one because I didn't start until the last part of August, and then I had like four weeks of training. The second quarter, I did reach out to 34 different individuals. That was the second quarter. The third quarter, we have a month to go yet, and I've reached out to 34. It's been quite an eye-opening experience for me. I have been able to help individuals anywhere from victims that have suffered from damaged property, domestic violence, hit and run, kidnapping, rape, sex trafficking, DUIs. Was able to assist a family that will be forever changed as a result of a DUI. And just to let them know that they have up to $50,000 coming from the state to help them with funds to help recover from their personal loss is quite satisfying.
So Lori, these funds come out of that state victim fund, right?
Yes, it's the Utah Office of Victims for Crime is the grant, Volca grant. There is a 25% match, that the sheriff's office matches 25% of what the state pays or the grant pays.
Well, are you talking about the payment to the victims or are you talking about your salary?
My salary, Commissioner, yeah. Yes. Everything that the state pays comes from the state. I just help the victims become aware that those funds are out there for them because they are unfortunately a victim.
Very good. Any questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, I have. So just so I understand what you do, this is basic year that lays on so you can talk to the victims and point them in the right direction for any type of monetary recoupment from the state fund. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do you do other things besides the monetary element of this?
I do anything from handholding, consulting, giving them resources that they might not know that they're aware of, up to contacting the state and letting the state know their situation.
Okay.
Just another resource for the sheriff's office and the victims.
Did this take place before you had this position? Did somebody else have this before you, or is this the first opportunity that we've had in the county to have this type of program?
I know there were domestic violence advocates many years ago, but I don't think that there were any specific victim advocates that would hold this position. And I think it's a great resource for not just the sheriff's office, but the county.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a great program. It's going to put these individuals in contact with, outgoing through a lot of red tape or running into some dead ends that may exist in our system that we know we all have. So I appreciate what you do.
Lori, how long's the state had that program going?
The grant, I am not sure, Commissioner.
Well, not the grant, the victim fund.
Been around for quite a while.
I don't, didn't remember, and I thought maybe you could refresh me. My entire time down there, I have a recollection of it.
It's been around.
So it's been 16, 18 years at least, and I just don't, didn't remember how long.
I can check into that and get back with you and let you know.
That'd be nice to know. All right. Commissioner Harvey, you got anything?
No. I've known, Lori, how many years have you worked for the county?
I start in 2005.
24. 24, 14.
I wish I was 24. I'd be that much closer to retirement.
Yeah. She's always done an excellent job with the place she's been assigned or she's worked. I appreciate what you do and you.
Well, thank you.
I don't question your motive or your genuineness with folks. I think I'm happy that you're representing us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I would like to put a little bug in your ear that I do see in the future, maybe the need for another advocate in the upcoming years, if not sooner. So this grant will be up for renewal in March, and then I believe if we get approved, it will go for two years, and then every two years we'll put in for it.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Randall.
All right, we'll go to action items. Item number two is approval of a contract between Weber County and Utah Holstein Association for Weber County Dairy Days. Mr. Duncan Olson, tell us about it.
Wanted to stand on the other side for a second.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. This first contract is between us and the Weber County Dairy Days. It is a fun-filled weekend where they come in and they have a little bit of a competition with their dairy cows, but they also do a lot of instruction, a lot of teaching these kids how to work, how to work their dairy cows. And so with this contract, we come in as a sponsor and one of the main sponsors. We get recognized at $1,800, and we help provide their programs and different things. And so it's an exciting competition that we love to be a part of.
So this used to be called Plain City Dairy Days?
I believe so.
Yes. When I was a kid, and I mean a little kid, in elementary, so that'd be like in the first grade, that'd be like 1957.
Hold on, let me, let me.
Okay. They used to hold this out there then, and we'd go out on the square there across the elementary school and go to it.
Yeah.
And it got to be a little too much. But so this is, this has been going a long time.
Long time. Long time. I'm not sure when we got involved and brought it over to the Golden Spike, but it's been there since I've been there.
It was in the 90s when we did that. Papa George and Wayman, Scott Wayman came to the Golden Spike and said, we just, we need a little bit of help. This originated.
Plain City didn't want any more.
No. Well, and this originated before Plain City. This originated down at the old stockyards, and they used to float their cattle from the river all the way up to the stockyards, believe it or not, on the river. I've been told by a couple of people, they've not long since deceased, but this has got a, this is one of the oldest dairy shows, cattle shows in the western United States. It's a great, great show, and that, to really be able to preserve rural heritage is the reason we have been in the past sponsoring this event, waiving these fees for this is to perpetuate the rural and the bovine industry. It's been a, it's been a great show that's got a great, great history, and there's still quite a few people, and it involves youth. And so there's a lot of things that it kind of helps. And so to say that Weber County is still not paying attention to its rural roots is incorrect. This is absolutely one of the things we do.
Absolutely.
And unless you're involved out there, you really don't pay, you know, your own. So this is a great thing. And so with, Mr. Chair, if you're ready for a.
With all that, I would make a motion that we approve the contract buying between Weber County and the Utah Holstein Association to hold the Weber County Dairy Days. And it's Weber County Dairy Days now because it's at the Golden Spike Event Center.
It is. They took Plain City out of it.
One more Plain City.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. That's approved. Second item is a contract between Weber County and Miss Rodeo Ogden for the Queen Committee to hold Miss Rodeo Competition at the Golden Spike Event Center. Duncan?
Another unique event that we host. We're excited about this one because it's in trade with Miss Rodeo Ogden. They end up carrying flags and doing a lot of little projects for us throughout the year, and in trade, we allow them to do their event on that Saturday, drawing a blank on the day. But we also come in as a sponsor of Miss Rodeo Ogden on that as well, and it's for about $700.
At July 19th.
Yeah.
This is in conjunction with the people who do Pioneer Days, Mr. Chair.
I bet.
In conjunction with the, so this is a way for the Golden Spike Event Center to help support Pioneer Days, the festival that's held here locally.
Correct.
And bring a little pageantry towards their festivities that week.
Very good.
Duncan, is this the first time it's been held at county fairgrounds? I thought normally it was held out at Ogden City.
So we've hosted it the last three years since I've been there. I don't know if it started before that.
It's, yeah, it started, I think, in 1989 out there.
And so we host part of it, and then I believe they finish up at the Ogden Stadium.
Oh, okay.
So we do a lot of the showmanship and stuff where they're doing jackpots and stuff inside their arena. We end up helping as a nicer area for them to host this.
Perfect. Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve contract between Weber County and Miss Rodeo Ogden Queen Committee and to hold the Miss Rodeo Utah Competition at the Golden Spike Event Center.
Very good. Second, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you, Duncan. We appreciate it. Next is item number four, request for approval of a contract between Weber County and perpetual storage for media backup. Lynn Fowers. Lynn, you've always got something.
I do. I do. It's always changing. So today, this is a small, three-year contract for about $1,700 a year, and the service that these guys provide is a weekly onsite courier service to take our disk backups down to Granite Mountain. And just one extra layer to have an air gap between our data center and our backups.
Very good. It's important, isn't it?
Yep.
To have backup these records.
Yep, for sure.
All right. Questions?
I don't have any questions, no.
I'm open for a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That we approve the contract between Weber County and perpetual storage for backup media storage.
Very good. Motion's made.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Thanks, Lynn. Last is a request for an interlocal agreement buying between Weber County and Harrisville City relating to an obligation required of a small municipal separate storm sewer system. Blaine Franzen, explain that to us, Blaine. municipal separate storm sewer system. Blaine Franzen, explain that to us. Blaine?
Commissioner Jenkins and members of the county commission, yes, this is a series of ongoing interlocal agreements between the county and the municipal separate sewer system cities, MS4 cities of the county. This agreement goes to support or fund the Golden Spike Stormwater Advisory Coalition, which is an advisory coalition to the states, Utah, excuse me, Stormwater Advisory Committee that advises the Department of Water Quality, their Stormwater Division. This will allow funding for the coalition to, our local coalition to consider hiring a professional manager to assist in the organization interacting of that coalition. This specific agreement will result in about $2,000 revenue to the county. Then that will be used to provide for that manager that will yet to be put out for proposal.
Thank you. We went over this in our WACOG meeting last time. You know, we've had a really good winter, and the real crux of whether we're going to have flooding or not will happen in the next 30 days during the month of March. And so we've...
Right, because you don't have to shovel your snow anymore.
That's right. Well, we've kind of warned the cities, and we've talked about it in our last WACOG meeting about storm water and flood mitigation, and so this is a result of that, and they've been working at it. So I'm very much in favor of this.
Blaine, can you tell us how many interlocal agreements you currently have?
We passed two at the last meeting. This is the third one. I have three others that I've received this last week that are going through the processing. In total, I would estimate we'll have between 18 and 19 agreements with the local cities and some of the cities in Box Elder County to the north.
So this is taking place as we speak, and this is going to be something that's going to benefit both Box Elder and Weber County and the cities, municipalities, I understand.
The GSWEC, which was previously the Weber County Stormwater Coalition, has been in existence, I think, since about 2006. But this will be the first time that we'll be looking at bringing in a professional manager to help administer that committee.
So it just increases the professionalism, maybe a little bit better communication with the communities?
Yes, and also to defray the cost of the chairman and the leaders of that committee. It takes considerable time away from their duties at their city or here at the county to perform these duties. This will allow us to basically put some of that homework and monthly duties in preparing the agenda and attending the meetings in Salt Lake. That will allow the local municipal and county representatives to basically defer some of the effort and time that this committee takes away from our current positions.
Has the person been named for this?
No, we have not yet gone out to the request for proposal. We won't do that until we have enough funding that we figure we can safely go under a contract with someone.
Very good.
Chair, I'd make a motion.
Yes.
If you're ready.
Go ahead.
I would make a motion that we approve of the interlocal agreement by and between Weber County and Harrisville City relating to obligations required for the small municipal separate storm sewer systems under the UPDES permit number, Utah R090000.
Very good. I have a motion.
Second?
And a second. Bye. Commissioner Harvey, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Blaine. Appreciate it. All right. Last item today is the stall of fame winner. We're going to have John Bond come up, and he's going to make a presentation to Lanell Jensen. Come on up here. We're excited to hear this. This is kind of exciting.
Yeah.
Lanell, we see you in that office. Thanks to you, and every morning we want to come and wave at you in there.
And I wave back.
Yeah. You do. It's great seeing you guys. Go ahead.
Commissioners, we appreciate the opportunity to be invited to participate in this. Gives us a chance to highlight one of our employees, and you offer a parking stall out in the parking lot, which is wonderful. If I just take a second, I've written a couple of things I don't want to miss, a couple of things I've written down because I really want to highlight Lanell in our office. But in the county treasurer's office, we're blessed with a staff of smart and nice employees, and today we get to highlight one of those, and that is Lanell Jensen. When Lanell's application for employment came through in October 2007 for being considered for a job, we had four other really, really qualified individuals also. It was really competitive. I thought it was a wonderful interview process. She rose above the others because she exemplified problem-solving capacity that we needed, a high degree of responsibility, excellent maturity, and superior attitude. She exhibited these qualities over the past 10 years she's worked for us in a very sophisticated, high-level job. She's responsible reconciling all of the Weber County funds to our various bank accounts and aligning those reconciliations with our accounting controller. She's dependable and reliable. She's very attentive to detail and very accurate with her work. She has great analytical skills. She's a team player, has a wonderful attitude, and is friendly with everyone. She's generally perfect.
Me too.
Occasionally, she's too determined and wants to balance to the penny, and I exploit that so that our reconciliations are accurate. During the past year, she was accepted into the, to attend Weber State University to complete a master's degree in tax. It's an accelerated program, and she will finish up her schoolwork in the next few weeks.
Couple months.
Couple months. A collective sigh of relief, but also well-deserved wow for this accomplishment. She graduated with a degree in accounting and passed the CPA exam, went to work for the Utah Jazz. She took a break in her work, and that's when we hired her when she came back into the workforce. At that time, she didn't work for a CPA firm, and so she didn't receive the ability to get a license. Well, now that she's back and wants that CPA license, she has to get her master's degree. She took that on, is now almost accomplished that, and will be able to be licensed. This will make her the fifth employee out of 1,109 employees in Weber County that has the CPA license.
Congratulations.
We have three in the clerk auditor's office, and we'll have two in the treasurer's office. It broadens our capacity and strengthens our ability to serve you and serve the public, and we appreciate that. We appreciate Lanell.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lanell, we're excited to see this award be given to you, and we're in meetings with you often, and you're a very positive, bright person, and we appreciate you working for the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Thanks, John. We appreciate it. These are the kind of things that make it exciting to be at the county.
Absolutely.
Good people. Well, Commissioner comments?
Either of you want to say anything? It's your time. Well, I just wanted to give special recognition to Lanell. We had an opportunity to have a meeting with the treasurer's office yesterday that was very, in my opinion, very informative. And I kind of come from the finance background myself, so I congratulate her on the CPA. We had the opportunity to view some of her spreadsheets that very precisely indicated where we are with our county budget, which is very critical to me and the other commissioners. We want to make sure that, we've said before, that we're spending those taxpayer dollars wisely. I've had an opportunity to meet with the treasurer's office over the past 30 days, and I can say without doubt that Weber County is in great hands because of John Bond and employees like Lanell. So I just congratulate it again, and thank you very much for keeping a very close eye on those hard-earned tax dollars. It's very important.
Thank you. Commissioner? You know, with that, it goes, I wanted to also comment with Lynn Taylor, Ricky Hatch, the clerk auditor's office. We did an editorial recently that was picked up, I know, by the Standard Examiner, about the county's bond rating. Are we financially in a good spot? You know, we were in the top 3% in the United States, and we were just audited. We were then upgraded, again, because of the decisions of all the departments working together. So I don't know what percent above the top 3% that is today, but that tells us that we're making good, sound financial decisions. And there were a few people at the first of the meeting that spoke about making continued financial good decisions at the first of the meeting. I'm confident that as our board of commissioners, with the information given to us, we'll continue to make good decisions. And I'm grateful to be a part of this team with everyone else doing that. I really appreciate many of you in this audience who are contributing to the positiveness in making Weber County a better place. It's great to be here and working as a team.
I agree with that. You know, we handle tens of millions of dollars every month, and that money flows through. I'm a little surprised how much flows through at other organizations. I knew it flowed through, but when you get in here and look at the quantity that flows through, you know, the quality is very important. And without you folks, Lanell, John, or Scott, and you guys, we'd be in a lot of trouble. And I'm confident that these payments go through here exact how they're supposed to be. And I have to agree with Gage. It was fun being in our bond meeting yesterday and going through that and seeing where the county is financially. The bonds are ready to come off and how we're sitting, and it's exciting. I mentioned in our campaign that if we could just be patient for a few years and let some of these things pay themselves off, that this county would be in a wonderful financial position, and I'm still convinced that. We're in great shape right now and we're getting better all the time.
Mr. Chair, I would like to mention too, so I don't know if I remember the members of the public that are here, I understand that we recently went through a state audit by state auditor John Dougal's office, and it's my understanding, the report I saw, we received accolades in about every segment of that, that we're well-managed, our finances are in order, and that they basically are using Weber County as a model as they go forward to look at some of these other political subdivisions, which if you read the paper on occasion, you'll see that not all municipalities, counties are as well-run financially as Weber County. So we just hope to continue that, and again, we can give thanks to our great departments and staff that keep us in that position.
I agree. So I want to mention, there was a notice sending out that said today's dress was brown suits with brown striped shirts. Didn't you get that?
No, uh-uh, didn't get that.
Me and Gage did.
We got it. What were you?
Not on the Brown memo day. I was shoveling snow.
That's right. You were shoveling snow. All right. I'm ready to adjourn. Are you?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Okay. All in favor say aye. All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.